Oh, they can last forever. I had horses for ten years.
I hope for a while. I got an order on schedule.
They do hydro and.
In October because I don't know, he just did three different shots and we were talking about everything else under the sun, but.
See, they can use legally in the knee and other joints. The horses we can use in all joints, hyaluronic acid. It's actually, it's actually removed from, become on a booster. And that's the natural substance that makes the lubrication of the joint.
That's what they show on the real sign.
I've got five fifty-nine now.
You've got thirty seconds now.
Five ninety-nine and twenty seconds to go.
I've never used this.
It's like super grease, super grease, but it produces more.
So thick you can feel it.
Yeah. But it makes more lubricant joint. We use it in horses and I've had about ten more years of competition with one injection, one seat.
We have one more in October. Just listen, I go in Europe and I go there and I want to make sure it's.
Yeah.
Good evening. We're going to call tonight's meeting to order. This is Monday, July fifteenth, Township Board of Trustees. I will encourage my colleagues to make sure your microphones are on so folks can hear us and turn it over for the roll call.
Mr. Fugus Bliss?
Here.
Ms. Butler Chandler here. Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Ms. Hagerman?
Here.
Ms. Kellerman?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Here.
Thank you.
Next up is Civic Reflection. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and follow, follow up with a moment of silence, so please stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now a moment of silence. Thank you. It feels like it's been a Coons age since we've been together. So, good to see you all. I see we've got a full agenda here, since we had to cancel our, well, we chose to cancel our first meeting, to be fair. But I think we're still on track with keeping things on the right path here. Next up after Civic Reflection is item number three, and those in the audience, if you're looking for an agenda up at the lectern, you can find extra copies. Is there changes to the agenda? I haven't heard any from anyone. If we're happy with the way the agenda's built, we could do a motion of approval.
Madam Clerk, did you have a chance?
Yeah, under fourteen F. Can we just change that to senior center closure and take out the primary election?
Meaning we'll talk about more than just the primary election?
Yes, please.
Of course.
So it's going to be for the election, but it's going to be for more elections than just that one?
Got it.
Okay.
We have one change. Is there any other suggestions?
I move we accept it as amended.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to accept as amended. Is there any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Number four is our disclosures of conflict of interest. Anyone have conflicts of interest they'd like to present to the board?
I'm still on the best school museum committee, which is an action item on the agenda.
Thank you. Any other disclosures? All right, hearing none, we'll move to item five, which is Public Statement One. Those in the audience may step up to the lectern and you'll have up to three minutes to comment on any agenda item or any topic pertinent to the agenda tonight. There will be a second time for you to speak at the end of the meeting with an additional three minutes to talk about any topic you'd like to, under the moon. But this first one must be pertinent to the agenda. So with that, I'd invite folks to head up to the lectern, introduce yourself if you'd like, and tell us what you're thinking. All right. Great, we'll keep moving. Items from county, state, federal, and other agencies? I don't see any of those folks in the audience. Madam Deputy Superintendent, are we expecting anyone? Great. That brings us to the consent agenda. You can see multiple committee minutes in there. Folks interested in action on the consent agenda tonight?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Because it's a consent agenda, we don't have discussion, so we'll move into a vote. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that carries as well. That brings us to the approval of our minutes from the Board of Trustees meeting on June seventeenth. Were there any changes to the minutes? Any concerns with the minutes? If not, would entertain a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from June seventeenth, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion, concerns, questions in the minutes? All right, seeing none, we will take another voice vote. All those in favor of the approval of the Board of Trustees minutes from June seventeenth, 2024, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries as well. We're trucking along. Number nine is approval of vouchers. Are there questions or concerns about the vouchers? If not, I would also entertain a motion to approve those tonight.
I move we approve the vouchers.
I'll support it.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or concerns on the vouchers tonight? All right, you want to do a roll call vote?
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Ms. Rose, Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chandler, yes. Mr. Fugus Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
That brings us to item ten. Our quarterly treasures report happens to fall on today. I'll turn it over to the treasurer.
As you can see, there are the numbers for general funds, sewer fund, water fund, and DDA fund. Do you guys have any questions?
I think I do. Let me get.
See if I can answer them.
Here we go. I saw a large jump.
In which one?
In First National CD five twenty-five twenty-five.
I typed it wrong. That's a mistype.
Oh.
Sorry.
I was hoping we gained two million dollars.
No, that was a mistype. I wondered if anybody was going to catch that.
So what should it read?
The same as the, the May thirty-first, because there's no interest added except at the end of July and June for that one.
So two seven six nine nine six dot three five?
Yep.
What a bummer.
Sorry. I was keeping on your toes.
Other questions from folks? I know people are constantly asking us what's left in the DDA fund, and we can see on here it's about a hundred fifty-seven thousand.
Yep, and I think most of that is meant for the sidewalks downtown.
But as part of the safe routes to schools?
Correct.
Okay, that's helpful, I think, for people to know.
Is that, is that part of the safe routes to school or a project that we're doing on our own?
Well, we're doing it on our own, but it is to help the safe routes to school, because we already have sidewalks there. They're just not up to code.
Okay, so we're trying to improve all the sidewalks in downtown?
Correct.
Okay.
Got it. That's helpful. Other questions about the treasures report? I'll do my quarterly reminder. I think folks hear the word treasure and they think you're running the budget, but actually you're talking about the investment.
Correct.
And the income that we have in that way. The budget is managed by our superintendent in her office. If there's not further questions, we can move on from there. Next up is committee appointments. So I have for you the appointment, or I should say the reappointment of Dwight Washington to the Recreation Advisory Committee with the term ending December thirty-first, 2026. Dwight's out of town and couldn't join us tonight. I did have a conversation with Adam Montre, the chair. He supports this appointment. And I talked to Dwight today and he said some highlights from his resume are that he has a PhD in recreation. He's been on the committee for a long time, serves as our county commissioner, and he said he's an all-around good guy. And I told him I would make sure that I mentioned that on the record. So it is my opinion that we should reappoint him to that position, if you all agree.
I got one question. Sorry.
No, go ahead.
I see it says until the twenty-sixth. Is that just two-year appointments?
I think his term was up in December, so it would have been twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six for three total.
Yep.
Is that?
Yes, thank you.
He's not replacing anybody. He just wasn't appointed at the time.
We did not have a new application on file.
Okay.
The process of our former supervisor was to have a new application filed at the time of reappointment. Taylor and I have been talking about if that's a barrier, if that gets us anything, should we change that? But we've kept all of the policies under our previous supervisor until we're on the same page. So because of that, we held off on reappointing him until we got a new application.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone interested in making a motion to appoint, reappoint Dwight?
I'll make the motion to reappoint the all-around good guy Dwight Washington.
Second's that.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any other questions or discussion on the issue? All right, hearing none, we'll do another voice vote. All those in favor of the appointment of Dwight Washington to the Recreation Advisory Committee with the term ending December thirty-first, 2026, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We have no township committee reports at this time. We do have some unfinished business. Jumping right into thirteen A, items for introduction and discussion, we have the Park Lake Nature Trail. If you all recall, we had a special meeting on this earlier in the spring. We had promised to bring the issue back to us in July. Our friends at the Park Lake Advisory Board went back and sort of restructured their recommendations and thoughts to us for us to wrap our head around some other options for the trail. I see the Chair, Dan Hayes, is here, and I'd invite him to, up to the lectern to share what he'd like to share. We have this in our packet, but please feel free to walk us through any of it, and I really appreciate your committee's hard work on getting this to us.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate the opportunity to chat with you all. Again, Dan Hayes, Chair of the Park Lake Advisory Board. So, kind of, we had the meeting in May, and I think there was a lot of, personally, a lot of confusion. We didn't have some great communication, so. But since then, our committees discussed it, as well as I've discussed with some of the, some of the folks around the township. And so the, I think the highlights are, you know, the, kind of, the packet we sent forth was taking into consideration, kind of budget considerations. We kind of had that kind of put forth to us. That was a concern, how much it might cost, given other budgetary matters that the Board of Trustees faces. The other thing was the Eagle Nest kind of emerged after we had done all our initial stuff, and that's a legitimate concern. So with those two things in mind, what kind of the, kind of revised proposal for you to consider is, is to first consider putting a parking lot or requesting the use of an existing parking lot that's at the east end of where the trail would be with Oak Island. So just again, for a little bit of background history, at one point, one of our members had chatted with the folks at Oak Island, kind of discussed that, and just like got chastised. It wasn't, we're an advisory board, so we can't really enter those, so. So, our board hasn't, hasn't taken it up. That's up to the township officials to do. But the benefit of that would be it's really no cost. There's existing parking there for likely six to eight vehicles, if not more. And kind of in our advice, you might, you know, whoever talks to the folks at Oak Island, kind of, the benefit for them would be that, that once the trail is established, Friends of Park Lake is committed to providing signage within the trail, so that would be a benefit to the residents there real directly. The other thing within the packet, and I didn't do the research, but some of the folks have done more research, indicate that property values in kind of adjacency to nature trails are actually higher than farther away. So again, that would be a point for, for them to consider, you know, because again, it means more traffic, you know, in there. Personally, I don't anticipate it would be a lot more, but again, those are things they have to consider. The other part of the proposal, again, if, if these kind of, if I run the negotiations, the fact that maybe the township would put a porta potty there, there's a small, I think it used to have a swing set, and I don't think it's there anymore, but, but again, it's kind of a common area, and again, a porta potty would benefit the residents, so it's a potential win-win. From there, the trail would kind of, if you bend down there, there's kind of a gating area near that parking area, and then the trail goes down by the water control structure. So the main expenses then would really be putting, say, wood chips or something to maintain a nice walking path, the maintenance costs thereof. If, if that isn't feasible, our Board would be happy to explore the other options, which would likely be putting a parking lot down near the water control structure where the access point is to that. That would be somewhat limited, and, and kind of, I talked with Ben Zeeb a little bit about surveying, and it still, seems still not quite settled precisely where is legal for folks to walk. However, an option would be to, just basically, extend near the water control structure, like a bridge across that small drain. So that, that we would say is kind of a backup plan. Obviously, it would cost more money than having somebody else's parking lot. So, so that's, I think, the, the kind of synopsis. The reminder of the benefits, it's, as I said, for residents, particularly in Oak Island and, I forget the name of the, the apartment buildings near Webster Road where it turns to Park Lake, you know, is having a nature trail in close proximity would allow, say, kids to bike there. Whereas, you know, other parks like Robson really aren't in close proximity. You know, nature trails have said if it has any additional benefit toward property values, that's a benefit. Then the signage would be something that, again, the Friends of Park Lake are committed to. And again, having folks in the, in the township like myself or Dwight, who, you know, who deal with this, you know, I think we can come up with something really quite beneficial. I think that's it. You know, some of the concerns that have been expressed, you know, the option we laid out, kind of, you know, avoid some of those, you know, the narrowness of the access road where Webster dead ends is, is a concern, and this would obviate that. So I think that's the synopsis. We had, again, an approximate budget. I think Judy did a little digging around last, last CIP, so, so, yeah, approximate, pretty close to reasonable. So, happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Questions for the Chair?
I do. In here, under your budget portion, you put in here that Judy Gardi got an estimate from J&amp;J Landscape. What year was that estimate done?
I think that was last year when, when she did the CIP. So, you know, it's not, I wouldn't call it an official bid.
Right, oh, yeah, it was an estimate. Yeah, I was just wondering when it was done.
It's pretty recent.
Okay.
The first parking area you were talking, isn't that close to the Eagle's Nest?
So, so there's a, where Webster Road is, right?
Yeah.
That has the Eagle Nest, so the one we're proposing would be over in Oak Island.
Oh.
So that would avoid any interactions with the Eagle Nest.
Okay.
The, the way I labeled it, I don't remember how I labeled it.
Yeah, you have it backwards.
Pardon?
You have it backwards.
Yeah.
Potential parking B is really his A.
Well, I think B is the preferred option. A was the original, you know, as everybody had seen previously.
Correct.
That's why I labeled it that way.
Go ahead, Jack.
Yeah, Dan, after we met and talked, I did go down there and look at the area in the park. Where, where is the trail entrance from that parking location? It's kind of overgrown. It's a little difficult to see in some areas.
Yeah, so if you, you pull in the parking lot.
Yep.
And there's, I think, like a horseshoe pitch area.
Uh-huh.
If you go to the left, the back corner, there's a wire, two big wooden posts, and I don't know how overgrown it is now. I haven't been back there for a little bit.
Okay, and that, that portion up to the trail actually belongs to the Mobile Home Park, too? Is that correct, or?
So I, I don't know quite where the terminus of the, kind of, the Oak Island property is.
Yeah.
My understanding is where that kind of fencing is, up to there was the new berm they built for the lake control structure, so I think that's either, you know, county or township land. But I haven't, that's a detail I haven't double-checked, where all the, the broad boundaries are.
And then one last question. Where, there's been so much confusion, different people I talked to, and maybe it's just my confusion because I'm not understanding it correctly. Where does the Hyde property actually intersect in there, in terms of?
So, so there's like a weird little point there. And again, I, the confusion, in my opinion, is, you know, some people bring up map, maps off the fetch GIS, which is inaccurate. And then, you know, what Ben explained to me, so I guess there hasn't been a survey that puts stakes in the ground to have, you know, the actual official layout where everything is, so. So I'm not quite sure where the Hyde, kind of, there's, I think, a little point to land there. So, but I, my understanding, having walked through some of that, you know, there's ways around, I think, most of that.
So I kind of feel like that'd be, not only trying to have a meeting with the Park Lake Mobile Home Park, whoever is in charge of that, but maybe get some clarity on where this Hyde location is to, from some township official, whoever gets appointed.
Yeah, and then again, I think Ben, Ben's been involved with the surveying more in detail, so he may already have that.
Okay.
He may have it already. I just said it's, I get confused, too, because, I mean, even where that, you kind of, road over the culvert is, is still somewhat ambiguous.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Like I said, our proposal, we're trying to avoid all that ambiguity and extra work.
Sure. Thank, thank you.
Sure.
Has anyone been able to get an expert opinion on the eagles and whether or not they are disturbed by cars going up and down the road every day versus parking there versus?
We haven't pursued that.
Okay.
Partly just, partly the other options, less costly. The other option potentially avoids some of the, you know, some concern we've heard from folks who live at the end of Webster Road, so.
Right.
You know, so we haven't really pursued that.
Ben has pursued that.
Pardon?
Ben has pursued that. He talked to someone from the U.S. Fisheries and Wildlife, so that can be something that we can ask for him to share with us.
Yeah, it sounded like there's still, you know, it's not like firm, you know, absolute hundred yards or whatever. And the other thing in reality, you know, is the nest's only used part of the year.
Right.
You don't want to have a nature trail.
Right, 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 right. Yeah, well, at the May sixth meeting, the May meeting, whenever, we talked about it. Ben had talked to the Fisheries and Wildlife person, and that person had just referred them back to the document that we had questions about in the first place.
He then spoke to a second person.
Okay, all right, that was what I was hoping for.
And I, he gave me the information, but at a risk of giving something wrong, I'll wait until he can tell us himself.
That sounds good.
But he had very tangible, like, this is a yes, this is a no, this is in the gray area, so he does have that.
Okay, good. That's what I was hoping for. I will say, I went back and walked back there. I didn't have a chance to go with the whole group, but I thought it was quite nice.
Yeah.
So nice wide trail, and there was, it was open and easy to walk, and short, but I thought it was quite nice.
Sure, yeah. From my perspective, again, when, when the berm was built to hold the water in Park Lake, it was with the thought of having a nice wide trail. And, and there's some little side pieces, if you know where you're going, that go right to the lake. In our past Park Lake Advisory Board reports, we've highlighted there are state threatened species that live there. The least-bittern in particular is a breeding bird that's rare in Michigan, and it lives right there. So, so there's opportunities, and like I said, some of the signage can help, help point people to the things they may not already be aware of. So, again, it's short, short and sweet.
Other questions for Dan? I see in the packet there was also a letter of support from Friends of Park Lake. Wholehearted support for the Park Lake Advisory Board, detailed and concise prospectus. So that's something to keep in our files as well. If there's no other questions for Dan, I'll let him have a seat and ask my colleagues, how would you like to move forward? Our promise during our special meeting was to come back and discuss it again. I think this sort of fulfills that promise, but it's clear that there's some hanging questions perhaps for our staff, as well as then the idea of should we take action on this? Should we put it as part of the process for budgeting for fiscal year twenty-five? I think there's lots of options. We're not to take action today, but it would be helpful to make sure, helpful to make some decisions to make sure we're moving forward on whatever it is we want to do. Go ahead, Dan.
I think we should get our budget in line before we decide what we're going to do, because I, because I understand that we, we've got some problems.
I'd call them challenges.
Challenges.
Yeah, they are challenges.
Um, it sounded like there was an option in here that didn't cost any much money to explore. I don't.
Was that the fifty-five hundred dollar option?
The Oak Island as a parking lot option.
Should we go ahead and call and see if they're even interested? Because if they're not interested.
Yeah, I do vaguely recall we had had contact with them in the past, but I imagine it's new managers, maybe even new management over there, so re, reinvigorating that conversation might be helpful.
There's, there's already fifty-five, or five thousand dollars from Park Lake, Friends of Park Lake, that's.
But that's only for signage, they said.
signage.
Uh-huh.
I thought that's what they said they were going to put in, was just for signage.
Component of the trail that would enhance its value and interpretive.
Signage.
Is interpretive signage.
Yeah.
I wonder if that can be negotiated with them.
Well, they can't put anything down, like mulch or anything, because we haven't approved to actually put a trail there.
Right, we would have to approve that. And there were some conditions about not developing it.
And keeping it as a preserve.
Keeping it as a nature-wise, but I wonder if Friends of Park Lake would agree to use that signage money for, I mean, how much can a few signs cost? Is that reasonable?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, so, I think, I don't remember if that money was earmarked, the way it was donated. However, I would sort of, Friends of Park Lake's budgets, probably sufficient to either cover or assist wood chips, but I can't speak for them.
Right, if we ask them and bring that forward, I don't, five thousand for signage is crazy. Like, they said that a sign for the bird would be great, but that wouldn't be a five thousand dollar sign.
Not five thousand. For durable signs, they're supposed to be expensive.
On something that says, like, entrance to the trail here, here's a map.
Stay away from this bird.
Pictures, and you can see, plus installing them, I can see, could cost some money.
So it sounds like we have some questions for our staff, Ben, and we have some outreach to the Mobile Home Park and some clarification from Friends of Park Lake on the use of funds. Are there other hanging issues that we would want?
Yes.
To come to the Board?
We need to know exactly where the survey needs to be done, because we don't know where Hyde's is. We don't know where their property line is. We don't know.
I have that under Ben, Ben questions.
Okay.
Is, is that sufficient?
Yeah.
I mean, he may come and say, we don't know.
Right.
And then there's another step.
So, we need probably, I mean, if we want to build our, this trail or preserve on somebody else's property, you have to have easements. I mean, there's a lot involved. It's more than five thousand dollars in wood chips.
I could sense it.
You're writing while you're looking at me. How is that possible?
Because you can see your hand go like that.
Because I'm not paying attention. No, you have my full attention.
No, that's fine. I think certainly those things getting resolved are important, but I'd just like to suggest that maybe a face-to-face with somebody from the Mobile Home Park who has decis, excuse me, decision-making authority, either inviting them up and just, you know, I think it's going to be more useful than like a phone call, for them to come and meet with somebody out of the superintendent's office or whatever, and just really get into it, maybe even go down and have a, have sort of a closer look, what it looks like down there and what the intention is. I just think that's going to go a long way, because until we get that ironed out, that's a portion of the cost that's really brought the cost down. And between that and then just getting some of these answers on where the property boundaries line, I think, lie, I think that's going to give us the opportunity to decide how we're going to move forward with this in a better, better way.
A written agreement with Oak Island, for sure, if we know what the properties are eventually.
All right. That leaves sort of five-ish issues for us to follow up. Are there other things the Board would like? Are there other things the board would like? What I don't want to happen is for us to have another meeting and say, boy, it would be nice to have this, and then another meeting, and boy, it would be nice to have this. It moves the can, but doesn't move the issue. So if we can have the information presented to us at the same time, I think it helps us decide, is this something we want to do now? Is it something that we want to work through the budget process on?
Mr. Chairman, can we spitball the target date on some of these five things, rather than just leaving them open-ended? Is that possible?
Yeah, I mean, we have the benefit of time between now and our next meeting because of the election, so we've got about a month before the next meeting. Our superintendent should be returned at that time to have done some of this face-to-face meeting. Uh, it doesn't have to be then, but that, the next meeting would be in September, the budget should have been presented to us by September 1, or at least the proposed budget. So we could either talk about it at the meeting in August, or add it to the budget, should the superintendent not include it and we want it in the budget as part of the process? Do you see what I mean? It could either be an input on behalf of the staff, or an input on behalf of us, or frankly, neither.
Madam Deputy Superintendent, would you like to pass that exciting news on to the superintendent, once you...
Uh, yes, I can do that. Um, I will say that the questions that you have for Ben, a lot of those, he has the information on. Um, he and Assessor Baki have been working directly with Spicer Group. They created the map for the original proposal, um, so they've been working with them to develop a new CAD drawing that includes the newest survey that has been completed, as well as updated easements, and reflecting the property that we purchased from the county.
And, speaking of things on the list, were we waiting, what were we waiting for to answer the question about the right-of-way on the road? Whether we can use half of it, all of it, none of it, the road over the water control structure area?
I don't think we were waiting on anything. I think there's just a disagreement with some residents about the interpretation that the township has taken. I don't know that more information was forthcoming, I think folks just are not in agreement on the interpretation of that.
Okay. So is that a que- is that a lingering question?
On behalf of the township staff, it is not.
Okay.
I think people in the community may disagree with that.
Even if you don't like the answer.
Yeah, it's, it's hard for us to, you know, say like, our staff is wrong, unless we have proof our staff is wrong, and I don't have any evidence, you know, I didn't get out there with my measuring tape, I don't, I don't know either.
Okay.
Uh, and I know our staff has worked with legal counsel, I do think there's a difference in interpretation.
Okay, okay.
Didn't, well, us buying the Durfee property for the walkway along the, along the water, that, that property is ours now, right?
The county property?
The county property that they, that they give it to, well, we bought from them.
Yes.
It is ours now.
Yes.
And so that is where he gave it to us, so that was where the walkway would be.
I don't know that that was down to the walkway. I believe that it was where the entrance to the trail would be, is that what you're referring to?
No.
Are you talking about the road, or, excuse me, the drain commission?
The five acres that we bought, whether it's 400 is underwater. It runs right along, uh, what?
I think everything that we have purchased is ours now. I think the hanging pieces were the drain commissioners, the county's land, that the drain commissioner was going to sell to us. Do you know if that's been executed?
Yes, that's what I was referring to.
And the answer is?
Is yes.
Is yes, so that is ours.
Yes.
So then I don't know that there's any other land hanging out there, do you?
No, that's, that's the one, but that's the one next to the water, that the, between the water and the gentleman that has the driveway.
That's the one that the water structure sits on?
No, this is back by the gate. It runs that whole distance, as I understand it.
I don't think we're talking about the same piece of land, you, do you know what...
I believe he's correct that it's up where the gate is. I do not believe that it extends all the way to the water control structure, but the easement that the drain commissioner needed to retain was so that they could use that access point to get to the water control structure for maintenance.
You're saying the water control structure is not on the drain commissioner's former land?
Not on what we have purchased, I believe.
So they still own a piece?
No.
They own the water control structure, is what I'm saying.
On our land.
Got it, but it's on the land that we now own.
Adjacent to the land that we now own.
Who owns the land under the water control structure?
There is no land, it's water.
It's in the water.
Well, on both sides, there is pieces of land.
Yes.
Who owns those two pieces?
It's the township.
The township, okay.
Yes.
So we do own that piece, so then the answer is yes. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Long way around.
Not necessarily, because I think Durfee's was the five-acre parcel.
Durfee, is that a person who owned the land?
Yes, who owned the land.
Before the county?
Before the county bought from him for the right-of-way.
Got it.
To work in there.
What side?
And I, as I understood it, from the county being in here, the property started at the survey stake next to the gate. From the survey stake to the water. Is what we picked up when we bought that piece of property.
What is the, what is the information you're trying to figure out?
I just want to make sure we had the property.
Oh, and I guess the answer is yes.
Yes, we have the property that the drain commissioner was selling to us.
I think there was a difference in surveys. There's two different, surveys done at different times, and I think that's where, we talked about this before, that where the confusion comes to our brains here is, there's no stakes that are agreed upon, because there were two surveys. Ray had one and Dee had another one, and so those are disparate, so we have to figure out what's real, who owns, it isn't clearly marked. We own from this stake this way, and they also said that we gotta keep traffic from going over the water structure, that can't be a pathway, is that, is that right, Dan?
So, so, the surveys that did, I think there is ambiguity on that, like access road across the hole. However, I want to highlight, making part of Oak Island, all that's a moot point.
Doesn't matter, yeah.
I, I, may I speak otherwise?
No, please.
So, I, I agree, you know, talking to the folks at Oak Island would be your first, first priority, that's what we're trying to suggest. If they're unwilling, you know, then it's back to drawing board, the cost may be prohibitive, and that's, that's okay, you know, I think that, that sets up a sequence, and you can ignore some of those other issues, but ID property that, you can bet like we are. And highlight too, if you, if you meet with the folks at Oak Island, if the timing works, I'd be more than happy to go to explain some of the natural history that's available there, to some staff may have been obviously...
Yeah, Sherry, my understanding is, we've paid for a survey, they've given us an answer. There isn't some, like, other place to go unless someone wants to challenge that survey in court, and obviously, we're not gonna challenge our own survey in court. So like, at this point, we've gotten all of the information that we can get, and we're sort of sitting on, this is the latest survey, and this is what we believe is true?
Yeah, I just think we were all confused about where boundaries were in the beginning of all this. Can't use the road, can use the road.
Right.
There's no access, there is access, it was just, but once we have our survey, put stakes out there and say, this is it.
So we've got a list of questions, to Jack's last point though, is this something we want to bring to us? I guess the real question is, prior to the budgeting process or within the budgeting process? One would be our August meeting, the other would be after that.
I don't think it would be unreasonable to get these questions answered within a month, so we can at least decide to move forward or not.
Yeah.
It's been going on for years. I hear the frustration all the time, but it's, let's move, get some answers that we could move forward on after we get the answers, so let's make, I think, get the answers.
Yeah, I think the thing that'll take the longest is the reaching out for a face-to-face meeting.
With Oak Island.
But we should be able to start setting that up. Does everyone, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
I was just gonna ask if we were in consensus and wanted to move forward, but if you have more to say.
But I like the idea of, if possible, to try and have Dan for that, here for that meeting.
With, uh...
Oak Island.
The Oak Island people, so he could explain some of that, I think that'd be a key part of it.
Great. Alright, I feel like we've got a pathway forward, we can trail forward maybe? Any, any other comments? Anybody feel like this is a wildly inappropriate way for us to move, are we okay getting the more, more information? Okay, great. Lovely, thank you, and thanks again to Park Lake Advisory Board. Next up on Items for Introduction and Discussion Election Update, from our clerk, I have to tell you, I'm very excited about this. Take it away.
Okay, um, first of all, all the new information since the last, since Proposal 22.2, I think it was, it, I'm trying to put out on the website. So if you have any questions, you can always give us a call, or go to our website, or go to michigan.gov/vote, and the information is out there also. Um, I've written on this one, but this is kind of a screenshot of what's out on the website, there's some, um, copies up on the podium. So we have more than one way to, to vote, we have in-person voting, we have, we still have absentee voting via absentee voter ballot. Now, the permanent ballot absentee voter application list is gonna expire at the end of this year, according to the state of Michigan at this time, but the application won't go away, because if you are going to Florida and you want the applica- your ballot to go to Florida, you'd fill out an application. You'd have a choice to do that, or you could be on the permanent list. Not everybody is gonna want to be on the permanent list. Okay? The next way to vote is the permanent mail list, which means, I've got about 2,000 people on the permanent mail list, so a couple weeks ago, I mailed out 2,000 applications to these people. We got probably 15 back that the, the registered voter wasn't at that address, they stayed in Florida, they're up north. Those ballots do not forward, okay? So they come back here, we, if they give us their phone number or their email, we always try to call them. Other than that, we will reject them in the QVF, which will put a note under the state of Michigan website, and then they have to contact us. If we don't know how to contact them, we do everything we can to contact them, and so, um, and then, starting in February, there was early voting. So Clinton County has two early voting sites, one is in DeWitt, it, at the township office, and one is at Bingham, at their township office. There was a mailer that went out that gave the nine days of early voting with the times, okay? There's, this was a generic mailer that the state didn't want us to put dates on there, but for the August election, the first day of early voting is the 27th, okay? So there's all different dates and times on here, and it's on the website, okay?
So the dates are on the website?
Yes.
Why wouldn't they want you to put dates on it?
Because they only wanted to do one mailing, and this is like...
Generic.
Forever, like, for our future elections.
Oh, okay.
But they did send another mailer out, which I got last week and a number of other people got last week, and this mailer says the date that it starts for the August election, and the date that it starts for the November election.
Yeah, I got that.
Okay, so this is the mailer that we all might have received.
Does that mean that these two sites for the early voting will be permanent?
At this time, yes.
Okay.
At least for this year.
Okay.
Okay. Um, let's see. Also new at the February, yeah, February election, if somebody receives an absentee voter ballot, and they want to go to early, the early voting site, or to the precinct on election day, they can take their absentee voter ballot, and they can put it through the tabulator at the precinct. They will have to still fill out, um, an application to vote, like we all do when we go into the elections, so they would fill this out, the person behind the, um, computer will switch their, um, their AV ballot to an in-person ballot, but they can take that ballot that they voted and put it through the tabulator.
Or if they just want to show up and vote that day, and...
Then we would have to, we would have to void that, if they wanted to turn in that ballot to us, we would have to void that and give them another ballot. But if they want to take that ballot that's been voted, they can...
What if they didn't do anything with the ballot that was mailed to their house?
We can still re- we can still, um, put, change it into a ballot that they can put through, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so there's that and that.
Got a question though, Brenda.
Sure.
If they, if they got an AV ballot, but they show up at the polls without the ballot, they have to spoil that ballot though, correct?
Yes, and they...
So it's another process?
Yes, they would call me, and I'd have to spoil it here at the township, sorry, I did not understand that.
So if they don't vote their AV ballot they got, it already shows they have one, so they have to...
Yeah.
Either come into the office and say, I want to spoil it, or they vote the ballot they have.
Okay. We are accountable for all ballots.
So I'd say, like, my dog chewed up my ballot, and so I just come and vote in person?
But I have to spoil the old one, because we are accountable for every single ballot that's delivered to the township.
When you say spoil it, that means just, like, record that that wasn't just...
And you would sign an affidavit that says...
Yeah.
What happened, okay.
And if they showed up, and they said, like, ballot 103 showed up in the, the stuff, you would have a list saying that's not supposed to be there, right? It prevents it from being cast.
Correct. Because it would have been spoiled.
Yeah.
Yes.
Because the point of the spoil is, so people can't vote twice.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct, so if they had already turned it in, and then they maybe changed their mind on how they wanted to vote, they could...
It's already been processed, they cannot get another ballot.
Not the day of. Not the day of, okay, so you just get one.
You get one ballot. You get one shot. If it's already been...
Makes sense.
Processed, you only get it once.
It's all done, okay. Good to know.
How does the poll worker know that the person has received an AV ballot? So I get one, I do nothing with it, I don't even open it up, I might not even take it out of my mailbox, but I show up at the poll to vote that day.
So I download a file at four o'clock the Monday before election.
Okay.
And it, on the file, it says, everybody who's got an AV ballot with the ballot number.
Okay.
And that is in the computer program that they are working with on election day.
Very good, thank you.
It sounds much more secure than I think a lot of people think it is.
It's really... Um, let's see, so I did that, that. I did forget to bring my numbers in, but I sent out, I think it was 2,043 or 47 AV ballots, and we've got about seven, oh, 703 returned as of 4:30 today.
What's the last day that you can still send those out?
The ballot? It's, it's now a week, the Friday, like, two Fridays before the election.
Okay.
I can get that and get that information to you. I didn't bring that with me.
Yeah, okay.
It changed, it was the Friday before election, but with early voting, I think it went up a full week.
Okay.
But I kept to verify that, and I can get back with you.
No, I was just curious.
Brenda? But anybody can come into the office now and fill an application and get an absentee ballot now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And they can vote it here, or take it home?
Yes, either or, either or. Um, also, 16 and 17-year-olds got a mailing stating that they can pre-register to vote, so, um, and the reason I think they did that was because, once you get your driver's license, you don't go back until you're 21.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I, this is my opinion, I think that's maybe why they did that, but they got a mailing also. And, I think that's it, unless you guys have any questions, I just wanted to give you a quick update.
No, I understand, this would have been from, I think, the 2018 changes, the register-to-vote timeframe has changed, right? You no longer have to be registered 30 days before an election.
Correct, correct, you can register on election day.
On the day of.
Yes, on election day.
With proof of residency.
Yeah.
So that's a significant change.
Yes.
Great.
And just for your information, we get a lot of college kids that come in here on the day of election, and they change their address, or they register to vote, and they or they register to vote and they actually have to show us, like a bank statement with their new address. And then we give them a sheet and then when they take that sheet, they go down to the precinct and it will tell the, the workers at the precinct how they're to process this, this person and their ballot.
I don't know why you said this is so complex. Seems really
There's a lot to it, but
It's nice because there's more options, but it does sort of weave together.
Yes.
I'm glad we have trained, talented people like you leading things up. Next up, under unfinished business, again, item 13, Large B Items for Action. The acceptance of the Maoshia My Wish Grant awarded to Bath Township Fire Department. And I think the deputy superintendent has information on that.
Yes, thank you. So I believe you all approved the application for this grant at your last meeting. And we received notification, which is in your packet, that that grant was awarded to the fire department. So per our grant policy, we do need the board to approve the acceptance of that award.
This is the grant for the coat?
Correct.
I thought it was going to be larger than this. Is this less than we asked for?
I don't remember. I don't remember.
I think it was like $8,000 is what we were presented with.
Yes.
I'm asking because I, there was also this match piece that we had to put in.
I believe there was a bit of a match, which we do have money in their budget to
Do you think they're going to use the full 8,000 match or just the 3,937 to actually match it?
I would have to double check with Kevin Douglas on that.
Regardless, it's in their budget, they have both of those things covered?
Correct.
Okay. That's really my real question.
Yeah, yes, I do. So that was the amount requested and our match is this to cover it.
It was the total was eight, okay, that's great. So we got the full amount.
Yeah.
That's great. Are there questions or would someone like to make a motion to accept this grant money?
I make a motion that we accept the grant money for Maoshia for the, for the fire departments.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any other discussion or questions on this? It sounds like it's a roll call vote deal.
And I'll also add the dollar amount to the motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chandler, yes. Mr. Phyllis Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes, sorry.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, and thanks to the fire department for constantly looking for opportunities to get money from other sources. I think that flies in the face of some of the things we're seeing on social media, so I appreciate that they're bringing in extra revenue. That brings us to New Business 14, Large A Items for Introduction and Discussion. The Landings at Hawk Hollow, Number Two, Special Use Permit for a Planned Unit Development. We have our planner here to address us on that.
All right. Hello, everyone. So the item in front of you tonight, as was stated, is a planned unit development usually referred to as a PUD, because we have an acronym for everything. If you're familiar with the Hawk Hollow neighborhood, there's a series of HOAs and condo associations in there. The Landings is a HOA that operates there. This would be almost like, you could, you could think about like almost a site plan amendment to the Landings' current formation. Mr. Kessler is here tonight, he's the developer. As it was detailed to the Planning Commission, the style of the units that are being proposed here and the formation of those units and the overall infrastructure layout, from the road to the lead sewer lines, is very much in the style of what currently exists in the Landings. I think even the HOA language they're going with is almost a cut and paste of the Landings. It was unanimously supported by the Planning Commission. There was some dialogue, a little bit about lot sizes, but I think they, in the end, went with what was presented. In terms of land use policy and looking at this, I don't think, and, and this is my opinion, but you know, professional opinion, I don't think you get any more of a cut and paste PUD than what we're looking at tonight. It's on a public road, there's no real drainage concerns, it's already got sewer and water available. It's, we're talking about nine units. Little bit of conversation on driveways, just because where Chandler turns off into Club Course there, you know, you're going from 55 miles an hour and you're trying to make it right. So there is a little bit concerned with the traffic. That's something that myself and the road commissioner are actually looking at, that Safe Streets for All Grant to help address. But it's really, that's not so much a Mr. Kessler issue as it is a road, a clean kind road commission issue. So I'll take that piece of it aside for now and just say, "We're looking at that." But yeah, we felt like it was a good development, we felt like it was a low impact to the area. That was my feeling that was conferred by the Planning Commission. Does anybody have any questions? For either me or the developer?
So how many units would this be?
Nine.
Nine total units. And they would all feed onto Club Course?
All for Club Course, yeah.
And they'd be single family or are they the condo style?
Single family style.
Okay. I'm sorry if any of that was in here, I just missed it.
No, it's a good, all good questions.
Other questions? Tonight, you're just asking to introduce this and we should expect it on the agenda again in August?
Yeah.
Great. Seems pretty straightforward. There's no other questions? Oh.
I will just say, since I went to the meetings about this, I believe Mr. Kessler shared that originally this had been planned to be a commercial development on this site and that's why it didn't get originally incorporated and developed as houses with the first Landings. And there were a few residents from the Landings who came and spoke at the meetings and they were all very happy about that, that it was going to be residential and not commercial. And they had concerns about signage and Mr. Kessler said he was willing to work with them on putting some signs up to identify the Landings versus Hawk Hollow farther down the road, which they thought would be helpful. Okay, those are the only other things that seemed pertinent.
Yeah, I guess on that note of signage, I should probably mention that along with almost any development that comes before this body, a suite of conditions have been recommended that were approved and recommended by the Planning Commission. The signage is one of them. Though notice that there's significantly less conditions on this than, you know, some of the other developments that have come before you because again, the impacts here are pretty minor. And we have faith in Mr. Kessler to give us a good development.
Great. Well, thank you for that. We'll see you up in just a few more minutes here.
Yep. Thank you.
That brings us to 14 New Business, Big B Items for Action. Little A, Authorization of Community Event in James Cousins Memorial Park, with information from the deputy superintendent.
Yes, thank you. So the superintendent's office received a request to have an event, which would be a vendor and craft show community event at James Cousins Memorial Park. Per our facility rental policy, it says that the township recognizes festivals and similar events may have a positive impact in building a sense of community. Township Board will vote whether to allow such events or festivals to use an entire park or facility. So per our policy, this does need to come before you all. The resident that is requesting this is Katie Dubenbeck and she is here if you would like to hear from her.
Great, thank you. Would folks like to hear from Katie?
This is a Saturday or Sunday?
Sunday.
Sunday? Okay.
All right, Katie doesn't sound like we need you. Thank you. Stick around, don't leave just yet. Kate, my question to you, you're sort of wearing two hats here. I know in the past, holding events on this property has raised some ire of some residents about the historical nests of the site. Do you see, on behalf of the mu, not asking you to speak on behalf of the museum, but someone who knows that group well, would there be any concern here?
I don't think so. Bath Days has been held there. Farmers Market, I mean, I guess some, the Farmers Market does draw the ire. I think the, the issue is vehicles. It's the driving around on there that raises the issue. But if you wanted to address that
Come on up to the lectern.
No, you're fine.
So I didn't know this was something I had to do. I actually had one in April and I didn't have anybody park on the road or on the grass. I did have a food truck, my, my family owns one and I made sure that that didn't, that was the correct side of the building and I just had people park at the school. I don't know if that was okay, but nobody was on the grass, just vendors with their tents. I marked everything with yard flags and removed everything when I was done. So.
That's lovely diligence, thank you for that.
Yeah. I don't know if it's still me.
No, you're You're fine, thank you. But I wouldn't imagine that would be an issue.
Great, that's helpful. This is an item for action.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Because it is a community event, I know that we have also waived the rental fees for events like this. Is that something that we want to look at doing also for this event? Because it is bringing the community together?
Katie?
I already paid.
Can you come back? Sorry.
That's not a big deal, we can refund it.
Are you a nonprofit? Is this a for-profit? What is the structure here?
I'm not a nonprofit. I just, like, like I said, my dad owns Two Guys Food Truck. And so I just, it was a weekend, we had nothing going on and so I just kind of do it. I don't make very much money off of it because of the porta potty advertising. But I'm not a nonprofit and I already paid, so I have no, I mean, I don't need it, it's $40.
And you charge vendors?
I do charge a little bit, yes. Not, yeah, so it's, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's perfectly fine, yeah.
Other questions?
Do you plan on this being an annual event?
Well
Or are you just trying it?
I, no, it's my second one. And I had thought about making it, you know, more frequently, but I got really nervous coming here, so I said I didn't want to do this ever again. You guys are nice to me. Then, yes, because, you know, my, my mom sells dog treats, my dad, you know, I help run a food truck. So I have my hands in doing that side of it that I was really interested in doing this side. But I'm also busy a lot with the truck, so I don't know if it would be an annual thing and I have no help. You know, I don't have really sponsors or, you know, all of this. I do it all by myself with a two-year-old and a 13-year-old and so I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think the most important question is what kind of food is in the truck?
Oh, well, you can probably smell me. It's burgers, onion rings, grilled cheese. It's all fresh, made to order. My dad raised me on being a cook. It's some of the best. I've heard, I don't like olives, but I've heard the olive burger is amazing. Onion, yeah, it's good. So if you guys all want to come up.
Well, I'm ready to make the motion.
We're actually talking about being at the car shows on Thursdays once in a while.
I bet that would be real popular.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
All right.
Make that motion.
I think we're actually done with you, thank you. Would someone like to actually make that motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize a community event in James Cousins Memorial Park for very easy access to onion rings.
I second that.
You come up there, I shall remember you.
I shall remember you, Jack. I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there other discussion questions?
I'm going to go ahead and put the date in there also on the motion.
Thank you. Do you think this is a voice vote?
We can do either way. Do we need insurance?
What would your guidance be?
I'm not, oh, I'm sorry. I'm not aware of your current practices. I would defer to the superintendent's office as to whether they ordinarily would receive any sort of insurance on these matters.
Just a question.
Yes, so we'll deal with the insurance piece.
Yes.
Our question is, should this be a roll call vote?
Oh, I'm not concerned about it being a roll call vote.
I'd just like to get you on record.
I missed you guys.
All right, then we're ready to move to vote. Any other questions? Great, all right. All those in favor of approving the request to hold a community event in James Cousins Memorial Park on August 25th, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion carries. See, we're not so scary, sometimes, I guess. We'll see how we treat Miles here when he gets up next. So item 14BB is Introduction and First Reading of Zoning Ordinance Amendment Number 78.01, Land Clear Cutting.
Okay. So this is something new that the Planning Division is going to be trying here, so bringing this before the board. Sorry about the redline copy. You guys kind of got an insider look at the process. Usually when we send a PDF redline copy, it's just all blue text. This one, for whatever reason, I probably didn't mark like all blue and so you see the iterations of edits. But hopefully that shows you that we really put this one through the wringer, multiple rounds of editing. Largely what we're trying to do here, and I'll just break it down in simple terms, is there was some fear as commercial developments are becoming more and more popular in the township and we're having a lot more commercial activity, as this commercial activity is taking place, usually when an applicant does their property acquisition, the first thing they'll do before they even set foot in front of the Planning Commission is just level the property, just clear it out. The concern there could be, Ace Hardware is probably a good example. They bought the property from Gupta, I believe, and then before we even knew what was going on staff-wise and I haven't received the application, driving down Saginaw, look over, there's no more trees. And it all worked out, we got an Ace Hardware. But if it didn't all work out, we'd be left with a vacant lot, dirt, you know, maybe no catchment for the soil, no drainage basins. And it can cause drainage issues, it can cause flooding on the roads. So if there's going to be a significant amount of land clearing taking place in the commercial aspect, we'd like to know about it and permit it to avoid those externalities. So to that end, we've created an ordinance here. Now, I want to talk about what the ordinance does, but first let me talk about what it does not do because I think that's probably going to be important for people. This does not restrict the private residential property owner from clearing trees on their property. I want to make that very clear. That was a concern at the Planning Commission level. You want to clear some trees, it's your property, you do whatever you want. We don't care, do whatever you want. What it also doesn't do is, you know, there is that property on the corner or across the street from Spags. You probably saw some tree clearing activity happen there recently. It doesn't restrict that. You've got a property, even if it's commercial, trying to clean up a couple of trees, got one hanging over the neighbor's property you're worried about, do your thing, we don't care. Where it does come into play is if over a half an acre of land clearing on a commercial property is taking place. And that half an acre is measured by the canopy as, you know, viewed from satellite imagery. So we use GIS to help us do some of these analysis.
And if I recall, you said last time, in aggregate.
In aggregate, in aggregate, yeah. So, and GIS you can use, and this is a little nerdy, but like roster data that can measure canopy amounts and we can do some math really quick to figure out if in aggregate, a half an acre has been cleared. So yeah, that's what it does and that's what it doesn't do. Any questions, I guess?
What would tip off your department to even look at this? Because I can't imagine you have enough time to sit around and say, "I'm going to go measure canopy on a piece of property."
For sure. And that is a great question and that's something that we talk about a lot at the Planning Commission. We're a small staff. I mean, in my opinion, we're working on like a shoestring staff here in the township. Like, we don't have time for anything. We barely had time to deal with like some guy's deck, let alone like what's going on with what we're talking about tonight. So we try to craft ordinances that make sense but are also enforceable. And our former Planning Commission Chair, he would talk a lot about how ignorance of the ordinance doesn't obfuscate you from your responsibility to follow it. So if this ordinance was passed, one thing we'd likely do is reach out to the Spicer groups and the Keps Engineering of the world, let them know, "Hey, new ordinance in play. You guys are the ones who are going to talk to these commercial clients before we even would because they'll be working with them to design. If they're planning on doing some land clearing activities, you need to let them know that, you know, this ordinance is in play." They need to come before the Planning Commission and get that clearing permit before anything else happens. And by passing this ordinance, we'll, you know, staff will set up the permitting process to execute said ordinance. Failure to do so will result in ticketing or remediation. It'd be the applicant's choice what path they want to go down. Because at the end of the day, the whole point of this ordinance is for tree cover and green space where the ordinance isn't in play to make money. Now, obviously, we want to build incentives in there and you will, if you go against this ordinance, there would be a fine that you'll incur, the fine spelled out in the ordinance. But we offer a second path, which is like just fix it and we'll leave you alone.
And remediation mean you would then plant trees? At that same age?
No, not at the same age, no, not at the same age. There's a remediation process and they would have to engage with the Planning Commission to determine exactly to what degree that remediation would take place.
Could they plant trees in the commercial development and call that the remediation?
Well, the Planning Commission, I guess, could determine at that time if the development was even going to move forward. But the applicant that did the clear cutting might not even have development in the works yet. So it's becoming upon them or, you know, incentivized upon them that they that they understand this process and not get in violation in the first place. The fallout from their violation is their problem.
Yeah, but it would still, if I've got it in my mind, I have not applied for it. I cut down these fifty-year-old trees and I'm able to replace it with ten two-day-old trees. And I'm just gonna put them along the places where I might put them for my development.
I don't think we'd find that acceptable.
What would you do?
Well, we would find them if they can't come up with a remediation plan that we find acceptable.
And the fine is ten dollars per yard?
Uh, it's spelled out in the ordinance, but yeah, that sounds right.
Square yard.
I am from America, so I don't do the conversions very well. What, can you do yards to acres for me? So I clear half an acre.
Yeah.
What would that, what fine would that be? What would some minimum fine then?
I don't have that math ready to go on.
Six hundred and sixty.
Jason had it.
Yeah, we, yeah, we definitely did it. I wish you would have sent me that question.
Sorry.
And this is only introduction, so I can get you that answer.
And what, what, my, the reason I'm asking it, is it a stiff enough fine to dissuade people from doing it? If it's a small fine, I might be willing to pay for it. You know what I mean?
Yeah, we did some analysis and we felt like that was a stiff enough fine. And we also reviewed some similar ordinances and that's what they were charging. We didn't like just make up that number.
Okay. So I'll, I'll trust that you all have decided it's a stiff enough fine too.
Five thousand square yards.
Five thousand square yards and an acre. So twenty-five hundred square yards and half an acre.
All right.
That adds up. Go ahead, Jack, I'll stop asking.
No, no, no. No, they're all good questions, I just wish I had that math for you.
Miles, what do you think would, an example of something that would trigger the planning commission to not approve the permit?
I think just if a, that's a good question. So if somebody follows the process and they come in, right? Because that's what we want to incentivize, is following the process. If somebody comes in and they get, go for a permit, then.
It's hard to hear, guys.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm bad at focusing too. So if, um, if somebody follows the process and they come up before the planning commission for a permit, then as long as there's a good plan in place, right? Hey, I bought the property, I'm planning on putting a store there. I don't know the exact details yet, but everything's in the works. I don't see why the planning commission wouldn't approve. Now, if somebody comes before the planning commission, they're like, I don't really know what I'm gonna do with it, but I know I can get trees there. You know, they gotta make a good case for themselves here. Obviously, the planning commission's like, okay, why don't you figure out what you're gonna do and then come back to us? I imagine the conversation would go something like that.
So they kind of have a quasi-plan in place, not one that maybe is fully developed, but something to look at.
Yeah, something to look at. And just early on in the process. And we'll keep the fee structure for said permits low. So if you follow the rules, we want to create low barriers to entry. And if you don't follow the rules, we want to create stiff fines.
Thank you, Miles.
Does twenty-four thousand two hundred dollars ring true to you?
That sounds right, I mean, it's high. I, I know at the time when we did the math, Jason did some math and it was high. Yeah, it's supposed to be stiff. If this board feels like that's too high or not high enough, obviously that number can be played with.
I mean, that, that does feel, you know, it's not a five hundred dollar fee, that could be nothing. Twenty-five thousand frankly is, to me, a lot of money.
Yeah, and I'm gonna do some math tomorrow, I'll have you some numbers for you.
Yeah, Sherry was very close on her numbers.
Okay.
Which was helpful, thank you.
Apologies again.
That, that's okay. You'd never believe that I would come up with that question. Do I recall that this did not have unanimous support at the?
Yeah.
It was one to six, is that what I recall?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
What was the reason for that?
Just ideological, and I don't ever try to take any side on any of this, I'm just trying to offer. But I think the opinion was ideological belief that you shouldn't tell somebody to do with their land, anything. It's their land. I think I'm correctly representing that, yeah.
I think ultimately the goal is just to avoid cleared lots that are, could be unsightly. I mean, if you think of the one on Clark Road, down by Clark Corners, that got cleared and then never developed. And that, it probably causes issues to the neighboring properties because all of that dirt is running off in all these rainstorms and versus if all that vegetation were still there, it wouldn't be a problem. So I think it's, it's attempting to avoid creating more problems down the road when the process doesn't follow its normal course.
That's a really good point, Kate, because when consumers came and cut the access point for their lines on my property, I now have a portion of my property which has never flooded in the thirty-five years I lived there and now it's constantly under this, now, granted, we've had a lot of rain, but it's constantly under this much water because the vegetation is not there to absorb it. So it's a really important point.
You said you wanted an in-ground pool.
Well, I'm just afraid Beth is gonna drive by and ask me for lake prop. I'm gonna put up a fence or something.
All right, any other questions for Miles while we're here? This is on our agenda for action for first reading.
I do want to mention that our former intern Lexi in the planning department did a lot of work on crafting this language and answering the planning commissioner questions and making some edits. And she's moved on.
She's in the consulting role now.
Yeah.
And she's reassured me that she is now their local government expert.
But I wanted to make sure we, we gave her some credit publicly for contributing to this.
Would anybody be interested in a motion on this issue?
I would entertain making a motion, but looking at the cost per fine seems a little high when you look at the size of.
But they said they looked at other places.
Yeah, quarter acre is a fair amount of land, but.
That's for half an acre, right? You said half is?
Yeah, half an acre or more.
Yes, so it's double what you're thinking.
Okay.
Do you want to continue with that motion or do you want to defer to someone else?
Defer.
Okay. Was anybody else thinking they'd put this in a motion?
I'll make a motion to, this is the first one. Well, this, it says first reading, do we have to have a second reading?
Yes.
Does the motion to have the second reading?
No, the motion is to approve the introduction and first reading. And then we also need to do it all over again for a second reading.
I'll do that. So the first reading of ordinance.
You're moving an introduction and first reading of seventy-eight oh-one land clear cutting zoning ordinance amendment. So that's on the video. We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion, a second. Any other questions or concerns about this new ordinance? Doesn't it sound like any, so roll call vote?
Mr. Funesless?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Conflicted, but I'll say yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
No.
Ms. Butler-Talander, yes.
All right, that motion carries with one no vote. That brings us to fourteen B C, introduction and first reading of another zoning ordinance amendment number sixty-eight point oh-four. Operation requirements for commercial marijuana facilities. Mr. Planner, would you like to address that as well?
For sure. And I'll point out that you correctly say that this addresses the, this actually addresses the regulatory ordinance in chapter sixty-eight. The next item on the board's agenda tonight, item D, addresses the other half of this language, which is the zoning ordinance in chapter thirty-one. So what I'm going to be explaining tonight addresses both of those. Because of the nature of marijuana in the state of Michigan, there is a zoning side, how we crafted our language in Bath Township, and there's also a regulatory side. A lot of the language is very similar, if not verbatim, in the regulatory and zoning side. The applicant that has brought forward this text amendment request, the language that he's looking to amend is actually the exact same in both sections. And the language that he's offering up to amend is the exact same in both. So I just don't want to explain everything for C and then have to come back and re-explain for D. Is it, the, the conclusion of this action will result in the same outcome for both sections. Both sections have to be amended for the outcome to come to fruition. If only the zoning side was amended, the regulatory side would still present the action we're seeking. So, on that note, what action are they seeking? The applicant couldn't be here tonight. He, Mr. Gormes, he has provided me some notes to read. I think he emailed them out to the board. I'll read those. He stated that he would be able to be at the second meeting if any questions come up. Before I get into his notes, I'll talk about our process and how this kind of played out on the township staff side and the review side. So we had police and fire look at this ordinance. I think Mr. Gormes even spoke with both our marshal and the police chief to get their concerns. I don't believe there were any large concerns with these amendments. What they're essentially asking to do here is extend their operating hours. Right now, via our ordinance, they can only operate from eight in the morning till eight in the evening. And then they're also asking to change our ordinance to allow the use of the word cannabis. Right now, the use of the word cannabis on any signage or any promotion material that is displayed publicly is prohibited. Now, I'll let Mr. Gormes's language speak for itself on why he feels that's important. From the staff point of view on the signage, in the planning division, we didn't have any problem with it because if anything, we hoped that it would offer clarity. I know I've heard a couple people get confused about what exactly they're walking into. We obviously don't want that either, we don't want somebody like thinking they're going into a flower shop and then they walk in and it's nothing but marijuana and now they're all freaked out. So, you know, there are advantages to clearly labeling things. I think the, the original thinking for this was to kind of protect the public from marijuana by not using marijuana or cannabis. But I think that the cause of that has inadvertently exposed the public more to it that wouldn't want to see it. So I don't think it's really working out. So there's things, you know, there's a concept and then there's reality. Okay, so I'm gonna read Mr. Gormes's letter here, not verbatim. I asked him to use no big words when he sent this to me, but he ended up typing quite a bit. So I'm gonna go point through point, but I'm gonna paraphrase this a little bit. Basically, he thanks for the opportunity for this to come to the township. Some of the reasons of why he's bringing this before the township is that, in his words, customer volume has not caught up with the expenses of operating this loca, you know, this type of operation in this industry. He believes, we believe, or we call them florists, and most of our important investment in the community. He talks about the two ordinance changes will allow us to better serve our customers and retain, if not increase, the number of employees. Floor employs approximately twenty full-time florists, which is more than sizable for a cannabis retail store. Of note, the recent Bath and State reapplication and relicensing fees has caused us financial hardships. So what he's talking about there is, in the state of Michigan and in consequently in Bath Township, these land uses have to reapply year over year. There's fees that come with those reapplications. Dad's opinion would be that those fees are too high. The staff opinion is that those fees are recouping the legal expenses we incurred by allowing this land use and we still haven't recouped our legal expenses, which were vast. This is a very complex land use to bring before the township. My wife and I and other investors have remained committed, however. We believe we are competing very well with approximately thirty other store locations nearby, even with the impacts of these competitive disadvantages. The updates will provide us an opportunity to increase operating hours for the store, leading to more customers. They have some data, essentially, they have some mapping that shows that the most active time for their customers in their store are eight to six, which is consistent with our busiest time of the day. Closing the store at eight means that we are closing during the busiest time of day. What they're asking to do in this amendment is have their floor sale hours go up to ten and their drive-through time go up to midnight. He goes on to say, approximately twenty-five percent of our customers use our best-in-class drive-through. We hope that increasing our store and drive-through hours will allow more customers to visit us when and how it's most convenient for them. Finally, this update encourages customers knowing what we sell, using the most culturally appropriate term. Dad has talked about how cannabis is what the, you know, the preferred terminology is within this industry. He talks here about how that's actually reflected too in the Michigan Cannabis Regulatory Agency. Michigan renamed the agency that regulates all of this to be in line with the appropriate terminology. He said people continue to visit the store thinking we sell flowers or something else other than cannabis. So it has been an issue in his experience. We do not know how many customers like we drive by and don't stop because they're not aware we sell cannabis products. So I guess that's a fear of theirs. He also says at the end, you know, if you have any questions, reach out. I think that's for the public too. If anybody has any questions, get in touch with us, we can provide his contact info. I think the board probably has his contact info since he emailed you guys. So, yeah, staff point of view is, we're not really concerned about it. I don't think there are drastic changes to how it functions now. We haven't seen on the police and fire side like an increase in call volumes. From the applicant side, obviously, they're requesting it, so.
Okay.
The planning commission's in support of this, I take it? Or we wouldn't have it here in front of us?
It was not unanimous.
It was not unanimous, no. Again, there was some ideological opposition to marijuana, you know, and it always really has been on the planning commission.
What was the vote?
I believe it was.
Six one?
Go ahead, sorry, Sherry.
This is the exact same motion I made a year and a half ago and I will make it again. That if we call it cannabis, that's what it is, whether you're for or against it, it's not a flower shop. And I think we need to call it, that, that's a major part, hours, I see that as reasonable. But I made this motion before, I didn't get a second, I don't believe, but I'll make it again.
Are you making a motion to do this right now or are you still discussing?
No, I'm, I'm making a motion that we accept both of these.
All right.
Business, sorry.
So you're moving introduction and first reading of the zoning ordinance amendment number sixty-eight point oh-four. Operations requirements for commercial marijuana facilities? Is that a good summary of what you're doing?
Yeah, that's the next one.
I don't think we can take two at a time.
Okay, one at a, one at a time, okay, so sixty-eight oh-four.
I don't want to put words in your mouth, Sherry, is that what you are doing?
Well, I guess I did, so if you'd like me to separate them, I can.
Okay. Yeah, I think we have to take them one at a time to do a roll call vote here.
Let's do the first one for the hour change, to extend the hours for the drive-in to, let's see where.
Is that the zoning one?
That's the sixty-eight oh-four?
Sixty-eight oh-four, yes.
Okay.
All right, is there a second for that?
I'll second it.
All right, now that there's a second, is there further discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry, legal counsel.
Sorry to, oh, sorry.
I never know which one is on. I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Robler, that I understand this to be pertaining to the regulatory ordinance, not the zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
And so these materials are structured as if they are amendments to the zoning ordinance as to sixty-eight oh-four. So we, we may need to make some administrative corrections to it, not to the substance, but in terms to the form.
And that's something that could happen with our vote having happened?
I think if we just note this during the record and direct us to do that, because the next one is zoning, the zoning section, correct?
So is the agenda labeled backwards from what is in?
They're both labeled as zoning because both ordinances were labeled as zoning.
All materials describe both sections as zoning, but I do agree with the way you presented, which is that the ordinance number sixty-eight dot zero four would be pertaining to your regulatory body of ordinances as opposed to zoning. So as long as the record is clear, I think staff and legal.
The header just says zoning, but it says sixty-eight on it.
A lot of things say zoning, so we'll work on it, yeah.
All right, I got it.
So you're on board with that?
Yeah, for sure. I just, when the motion got made though too, it was saying about hours. I think it should just be worded that we, I recommend to accept the first reading of the amendment to chapter sixty-eight point zero-four.
That's a great suggestion from your planner.
Is that comfortable with you, Sherry? And Jack? Great. I do have a few more questions. I know as part of the naming issue, we also don't allow imagery. Is this changing the imagery rules at all? So still no pot leaves on signs and got it. Do you know why eight P M. was originally chosen?
I do not, because when, when I first got hired here in twenty-twenty-one, we changed up all. I do not, because when, when I first got hired here in 2021, we changed up a lot of how this functionally worked. We didn't change up any of the specifics, so that was preceded me.
If I may, if I recall correctly, I believe that may have been a recommendation from the police department chief at the time.
That is very helpful, because my last question was, has the police chief seen this? Is there any concerns from him?
He didn't express any concerns.
Great. That does seem very reasonable to me. Other questions?
I just want to, I had some questions about security in terms of, I know that that's common at cannabis retailers, and there is not security in terms of a security person other than security cameras. So, I just, my concern is employee safety in these later hours without any security. Just if that would be attracting less safe situations, I suppose is what I'm trying to say. That was my only concern. I did vote yes at the planning commission to advance it to the board of trustees, but I wanted to bring that up again, that I felt that that was a concern that I wasn't sure was actually addressed.
That's, I think, a great question. I got a tour of this facility, and it was one of the first things I noticed too. Every other one that I have seen has had like a physical, big, large person standing outside or just in the doorway. Is that not a requirement of the Michigan laws?
No, they, so it is not, but they have to, I'm getting a little bit into, out of my realm here. But there's certain requirements for security that they do have to meet in lieu of that, because they don't have kind of a front walk-in area. So, there were certain requirements on, for example, the door lock technology that they're using, the amount of cameras and the angles they had to cover in lieu of having that area. So, they kind of went with, I guess you call it, like the more high-tech approach than the low-tech approach. And their camera feeds, by the way, are live and 24/7, and our police department has access to those. They can log in and view them anytime. They share the feeds with us.
No, that's helpful to know.
At least on the exterior of the building, not on the interior, so I don't want to mispeak there.
I, in my tour, they did show me the security in the drive-through, and I'm not gonna describe that now, but I was impressed that it was, it did feel a little scary to me, like someone could just drive up and do it out. You see what people do at drive-ins at, you know, McDonald's and things, so I was a little concerned. But it, they assuaged my concerns.
Yeah, they kind of went with the high-tech option.
Just because you can see what happens, though, does that preclude something from happening?
No, I don't think we could ever say that, right?
Person who may be more of a deterrent, which is why I would imagine most other facilities have an actual person.
Yeah, and I, I will say that I'm speaking towards specifically the drive-through piece, where there would not be a person anyway. That piece, I felt overly secure, but like you're asking, I did notice that there was not a large person standing outside. Most of them that I see are in a more urban and perhaps, I would assume, more crime-riddled area in the city. I don't want to make assumptions, so that might be why they've gone that way. But the first time I was in there, I noticed that as well.
Other businesses in the area that are also open till midnight? Is, how, I don't even know, Myers?
There's nothing in the area.
Does Myers open that way? McDonald's?
What's Dunkin' Donuts?
Yeah, this is specifically the drive-through, right? So, like McDonald's drive-through is open later, you know, Dunkin' Donuts drive-through is open later. The floor area itself closes at 10.
Right.
City Limits is, they've got the bar. It's not quite in the township, but it's right across the line.
Myers, I believe, closes at 10.
Myers closes at 10?
I think they changed the drive-through.
I think I've definitely been in there.
Are you talking about the drive-through closes it for the pharmacy? Because I think they are a 24-hour operation over there.
The drive-through is?
No, I'm referring to the building itself, so I suspect it's possible they have a fairly, really cutoff for the drive-through.
Definitely been in there late.
There's also, there's also.
It used to be 24-hour, but it changed during COVID, but I don't know.
I think they changed it back.
I don't know, I, ad hoc, don't feel like 10 o'clock is too. And they're saying that their prime sales time, like in Dad's words, you know, when we've discussed this at the planning commission, he's basically like, you're killing us here, where our chart for sales go like this and then we close.
Yeah. I'd just like to comment on the security. I know you went through, I went through. The way it is designed and technologically, it's pretty, pretty keen, actually. I mean, it's, the way the building's laid out, it's like a sort of an inner sanctum and an outer sanctum. And they all have the ability through cameras to coordinate locking of the doors and a place for employees to get to for safety while they notify immediately the police, as you've said, they have contact with them. And I was quite surprised, having had an opportunity to look at a number of, from federal facilities to other facilities that use technology, I was very impressed with the way they have this set up for safety of their people.
Yeah, and I can't really speak intelligent to you, but I know that some of how their walls were laid out and those dividers were put in was what they're required to do by the state in lieu of kind of that initial processing area that you're typically seeing.
Well, and I think we can see that they've been open during the winter where dark starts, you know, sometimes at like 5:00. And we haven't, to your testimony here, seen an increase in crime. To me, like the darkness is like the thing, right?
Yeah.
Because you could rob a place at noon or at midnight, but if we haven't seen that change when it is dark out, I don't know that we would see it with a few extra hours.
Well, another thing they did, just speak to safety, that I thought was pretty interesting just from the site design aspect, is if you have driven past this facility at night, there's, you know, that buzzword in play and it comes like, "Safety through environmental design." It's probably one of our best-lit buildings in the township in terms of like least amount of light impact off-site, but most amount of like direct light onsite. And then they also use the technique where their drive is kind of meandering. You have to drive actually up into the facility, so it's not something where you can just kind of smash and grab it, as they say. You know, you gotta work for it a little bit.
That's helpful, thank you. So, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Are there other questions? These are really great questions everyone is asking.
Go ahead, explain the motion again. Are we doing 3188?
No, we're doing 68.04. And Miles, can you remind us what is in 68.04?
It's the regulatory side of the marijuana ordinance for the township.
Changing the hours and changing the ability to use the word cannabis?
Yes.
Does that help out?
Changing the hours, they must be closed from 12:00 AM to 8:00 AM. So, that's, they're going to be open till midnight.
The sales floor would be open till 10. The drive-through would be open till midnight.
The drive-through open later. And then, using the word cannabis instead of floral is going to be allowed, which.
They'll still use floral, they'll use cannabis in addition.
Cannabis will be up there.
Yeah, he's sort of signed his letter here, flora cannabis.
Yeah, yeah, so it's cannabis flowers.
So, I think the motion is, you're gonna approve to introduce the introduction and first reading of zoning ordinance number 68.04, operation requirements for commercial marijuana facilities.
Go ahead.
It's going to be going to regulatory.
The amendment was that you would be approving the ordinance amendment number 68.04, exclude the reference to zoning, because all of the materials will need to be stripped of references to zoning as to number 68.04.
Okay, thank you.
Which already is not a zoning ordinance.
Correct.
Got it.
Okay.
We won't have that problem with the next set, which is in fact zoning. This is just, we all get in habits.
Right.
And so, we can make those slips, we can adjust any publications and language of your ordinance that is fully within the normal responsibilities of bringing something up first, making any tweaks, and then bringing it forward again.
This is why I think it's great that we continue to have you or your colleagues here. All right, any other questions on this? I think we're all on the same page now. All right, we've got a motion, a second, and we are gonna take a vote, and this is a roll call vote.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
No.
Mr. Rosecrans?
No.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes. That passes with two no votes. That brings us then to item D. I think, Miles, you've done the full introduction. This is the zoning piece?
Yeah, sorry for the confusion.
It's okay. Any other clarity around this that folks needed above and beyond the first item? All right, would someone like to do a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve the introduction and first reading of zoning ordinance amendment number 31.88, site development standards for commercial marijuana facilities.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Now, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion, questions of the issue? Hearing none, we'll go to another roll call vote.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
No.
Mr. Rosecrans?
No.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you, really great questions, really helpful to get through this, and these will come back to us one more time each. And thanks to the planning commission and the planner for moving this forward. That brings us to item E, archaeological project for Bath School Museum, and our deputy superintendent will tell us more about that. I think we've heard about that once already, right?
Correct, that was presented at your last meeting. So, we're just bringing this back for approval for the fixed fee of $1,500. That would be appropriated from the DDA fund balance.
Questions about what we're talking about here?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve to pay the $1,500 to Gray and Pape for the work associated with the archaeological project for James Cousins Park. And the money, the funds will be appropriated from the DDA fund balance.
I will second it.
Do you want to attach any cap to that, or are we just paying? Oh, you did, thank you.
I said $1,500.
But did you want to put a cap?
$1,500.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any other questions for people who maybe were paying attention better than I was? All right, seeing that this deals with money, I think we should do a roll call vote.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. That brings us to our last item of business tonight, senior center closure, and our clerk has information on that.
So, in the February election, we were able to open up an AV counting board, which helped us, it helped us a great deal. So, an AV counting board is a, is actually a room we would use, I'm proposing to use the senior center, where we would open up three precincts just to process the AV ballots. This helps everybody get done in a timely fashion, and it gets the results up to the county faster so that you guys can see them faster. So, we tried to do it at, well, we did. We did do it at the library community room. It didn't work out like we were looking for it to work out. It was a smaller room. We discovered we needed a larger room. The senior center is always closed on election day, so I thought that was perfect to use the senior center. So, in addition, in addition to me asking to use the senior center on, on future election days, if we could also close it on Monday at 2:00. There really isn't anything going on out there after 2:00. If we closed it at 2:00, then that would help DPW and us set that room up for the next day. So, I'm proposing that we could close the senior center for Monday at 2:00 through future election days.
I'll second it.
You made that motion?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. My question is, do you need us to take action on this? My understanding was the administration made the decisions about hours, closing and opening. It sort of undermines what we have said to folks who have said, we shouldn't close, we should close, that that's not our to-do?
That's true, but I think that with your support, we would know that it's going to be closed for future elections, and there would be no questions in the future.
So, sort of like, this is how we're gonna handle it moving forward?
Yes, yes.
Is that why this ended up on the?
That is correct.
All right, thank you. So, we've got a motion, a second, other questions? All right, voice vote seems okay with us. So, all those in favor of approving using the senior center for an AV counting board and closing during elections, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed to that? All right, that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
That brings us to the superintendent's report. Today, it's an assistant superintendent's or deputy superintendent's report. Happy to have you sitting in the shoes of our superintendent today. What do you want to tell us?
Thank you, happy to be here. On your agenda, just a reminder that the August 5th meeting is canceled due to preparation for the primary election. So, the next time we will meet is August 19th. Some hiring updates. Our new recreation coordinator started today. Her name is Naomi Alfaro. We are very excited to have her join our team.
Did you say Alfaro?
Alfaro, yes. We also had a new assistant cook at the senior center start today. Her name is Regina Jimenez-Rumens. So, very excited to have her aboard as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for our deputy superintendent tonight? All right, that brings us to the end of our content of our meeting, and next up on item 16 is public statement two. This is the time that I promised you all an opportunity to share your thoughts on anything under the sun, up to three minutes. Help yourself to the lectern, and if you're interested, give us an introduction of who you are.
John Reich, chairman of the planning commission. I want to apologize for Mr. Kessler and I's behavior, we were totally outlying. However, I want to also address what was be called the clear-cutting ordinance. It's not our intention to penalize anybody for cutting trees or shrubs on their property. The concern is that they would negate the property, or whatever you want to call it, and create an environment that addresses the problem Mr. Phillips has, or the problem with runoff or erosion that's not being addressed because there was a change in the development process. And instead of the development going forward and becoming a finished site, it becomes bare land that creates issues for the neighbors. And it's probably not a perfect ordinance. I'm sure that we're gonna have to make modifications to it as we try to enforce it and implement it. And hopefully, that will be addressed as concerns come up where it just doesn't work well. All ordinances are never perfect, especially when you're plowing new ground, so to speak. We'll be cognizant of how it works out. If it doesn't work any well, we'll make the modifications. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you had any questions, did you have any questions about why it looks like it is, or? No?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Other comments?
Good evening, Chris Hagerman, vice president, Bath School Museum Committee. First of all, I just want to thank you guys for, again, showing that the museum, the James Cousins Park, and all the things our committee is doing is important to you guys. It's important to us, and we're really trying hard to make this museum a real thing. And this is just one of those steps that's gonna help us in the future. And so, thank you, I really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Other folks who want to address the board?
I have no idea if this is something that should come to the commission. Thanks for letting us speak here, by the way, though. It's interesting to see how this, this all works. And I don't know if it's a question that you can answer or not, but is there, is there a township-wide policy or plan? Maybe I should have asked Miles this, for getting internet throughout the township? Because we live out on Chandler Road, and we seem to be in a dead zone. You know, we see fiber optic cable being laid around us and, oh, it stopped a half a mile away, or whatever. And I just, I didn't know, I don't know if the, if the commission talks about that sort of stuff, or?
Yeah, we talk about it, it feels nonstop. I think trustee, you can give him, you can either do it now or maybe after the meeting. Also, you can ask our staff these questions as well.
Okay, yeah, I know, I've called like a couple of times, and I think the answer that I've gotten is, it's really up to the provider. Like, you guys don't have any input, and that struck me as. And that struck me as, as being hard to believe, that you seem like you would be intimately involved in.
I mean, you would, you would think that. That's not exactly the case. Trustee Hagerman, do you mind talking to him after?
Sure, so earlier this year, there was an initiative through the state of Michigan. They got federal infrastructure-
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
-money, and they set up this thing called the BEED, which is an acronym, BEED Challenge Process, where homeowners would go in and enroll, so to speak, in this challenge process where it would basically test your internet and compare it to what your provider says they are offering you. And did, I was just curious if you were able to participate in that?
Well, I-
That would have been the first step.
The only internet we have access to at our house is a cell phone, and the cell phone-
Okay, are you far back from the road?
No, there's just no, there's no Xfinity, there's no fiber optic on Chandler.
You don't have Wow or Frontier?
No.
Then you would have been-
Is Frontier the landline through phones?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have a landline.
But you have the option to get it, to get one through Frontier?
Yeah.
So, um-
I guess we're more, I think we were more interested in cable or fiber than we are-
Well, aren't we all?
Yeah.
In the challenge process, then your address, and you can still go in and look it up, would have been color-coded, red, yellow, or green. Green meaning you have good internet and it's, it meets the expectations that your provider says they will give you. Red means you don't. You probably would be red if Frontier is your only option, which is through the phone line anyway. And so then, that process just wrapped up. And so then the next step is to go through and to start to put money toward these areas to upgrade those of us, myself included, who have a red label, to start using some of that infrastructure money. And so, we're just getting to that part of the process. So I guess the, the short answer is, is help may be on the way. But the unfortunate part of that is the timeline to have that completed is about three or four years from now.
It's just so much stuff.
That, that's for the entire state. I personally believe Bath, with our proximity to mid-Michigan, and we're not really in the middle of nowhere, say like in the middle of the U.P., where you might be. I definitely think we're, realistically, we would be on a speedier timeline, but that is the deadline for the state of Michigan. We, I, I am in the same boat.
Well, the county did just get a Robin grant, right?
Yes, the county, that was going to be my next thing. We just saw that the county was awarded a grant and some areas in Bath Township were included, but I don't know specifically how they're going to use it. I'm not on part of that at all.
The last application we saw from the county said Bath Township would be included, but the number of households was very small, like small.
Chandler's the dividing line, right? I think I'm already over three minutes, but I thought maybe there was some, like, let's do it, Township's responsibility. No, it's, yeah, I'm sorry.
So, I mean, there is, there are some options, but there is federal money to make it happen. It's just probably not going to be as quickly as we would all like. But hopefully, the issue is certainly on our radar, so to speak.
You guys are involved in others, okay.
Yeah.
So it wasn't inappropriate for me to come and ask my question?
I don't think it hurts to call the county and say, "You're in Bath Township and you're hoping that they will help serve you." I don't know that that'll change their application, but there seems to be a belief that DeWitt and Bath are well-served. I think folks like you would argue that that's not the case. So when we've, in the past, when the county has pitched these ideas, we have not been well-included.
Oh, okay. So it wouldn't hurt to give them a call?
No.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from public today? If you, sir, want to give the clerk your name to include in the minutes, you can do that later. You're not also required to do that?
Can I introduce myself? I'm sorry. I'll give her your name.
That's okay.
Thank you.
I feel no pressure from me, but if we are able to, it's always helpful to include that.
We were here for school.
I promise, we're okay people.
We're not scary. But we're doing a lot on our internet.
Just come to the meetings and use our internet. That is a strategy, I like it. All right. Other public comments from folks? All right, hearing none, then we'll close public statement two and turn it over to board member comments. Someone has, again, moved my secret sticky note that tells me where to start. So Sheri, I'm pulling your name today.
Thanks, thank you for coming, all, appreciate it.
That it?
That's it.
I'll just take a couple of minutes to talk about our decision with regard to marijuana regulation tonight, because there can be a sense of people that you're just totally on one side or another. But I was reminded by some former board members when this first came about that I was vehemently against marijuana in our community. Having said all that, I'll say, since we have a business here, I think when we try to encourage people to bring businesses here, and they do that and they make a pretty significant investment, that if we can help them be successful, that's important to me. And if that success can hinge on just a few changes and some ordinance language, then I think it's kind of part of our responsibility, not to really drive a business to be successful, but to give them the opportunities to be successful if we can do something that's not just a wholesale change. So that's the reason that my vote was yes tonight. And I think it is important for us on any business, whether I'm necessarily for it or not, and I, and I can't say that I've changed my opinion on that, but to help them be successful in their business that they've brought here.
Thank you, sir.
Just thank you for coming.
Yes, thanks for everyone for coming. Thanks to our staff who are serving in lots of new ways with the absence of our superintendent temporarily. We really appreciate that. My last comment will be about the Police and Fire Millage. I've been reading a lot online about concerns about overspending and uncontrolled spending, and I just want to be really clear with folks. Our police department has grown, has grown in number, has grown in equipment. Our fire department has grown, grown in number and grown in equipment. We have more growing to do to reach, reach the stage we need to reach as a growing community, which I think is important to folks. So I want to, I want to really dispel that you're paying the same thing now that you were paying for later. We actually have expanded both of those departments, I would argue, pretty tremendously over the last few years. And we need to bring in new revenue to be able to cover that and be ready for future expansions. So, again, just want to, you know, demystify what you're reading online. The money coming in from the Police and Fire Millage will only go to the Police and Fire Department for those activities. Thanks.
We've got about three weeks before the next election, so I just want to encourage everybody to, you know, get out and vote. We've got different ways to vote, so if you have any questions, just call the township. I'll be happy to help you. And I do want to give a shout-out to all the staff here that's been helping out with the election. It's not a one-person, you know, job, it's everybody chipping in, so.
Yeah?
I have nothing.
I would like to thank DTW, DPW workers who painted the cupola. If you've checked it out in the park, it looks bright and shiny. They did a great job. I also want to thank Sherwin-Williams Paint for donating the paint, which saved us at the township a little bit of money covering that cost. We're very thankful for that, it looks great. I did also want to let everybody know that the Bath School Museum is hosting a film event on August 1st. We're going to be showing the documentary series called Forgotten. It's a documentary about the Bath School disaster. You may have seen part of, an early iteration of this at the 90th anniversary event that we had a few years ago. It has interviews from survivors. The process of making this film was started about 20 years ago, and it's reached its almost completion. And the museum is going to be giving what's called a sneak peek event. As of right now, this is the only way that anybody in the world can watch this film is by coming to the Bath School Museum on August 1st and watching it. It's not currently available for streaming or buying or downloading. So if you want to see it, an important event in our community's history, then go online to our Facebook page and grab some tickets, or come to the museum on Saturdays. And we are selling paper tickets, that you can get an actual ticket ticket there as well.
So that'll be held at the middle school?
It'll be in the middle school outdoor.
Outdoor, okay.
Yes, so seating is limited. There are still seats available, but I would encourage everybody to come get a ticket.
Did you say August 1st?
August 1st, 7:00 p.m. It should be Thursday.
It looks like a Thursday, okay.
Great, thank you, anything else?
That is it.
All right, that's it for us, folks. If someone want to make a message, a motion to adjourn? We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, we are-